Okay, so part of this, you know, two days is to get to know council members a little bit better. So we have some questions also, even in the processes and stuff coming around the city. I have an index card, a couple of questions. If you have any other questions, feel free, you can go to the index card, bring them up here, and we'll just kind of go around. And then, of course, during this conversation, we have a mic we can pass around too, okay? So I'll start with, there's an idea that was passed out. This is for council, and how much do we know about each other, all right? Now, is this a question for me to ask individual council members that you got? Or is this more or less like, like trying to quiz council?
No, I think it was having council members answer these questions.
Sure, okay, alright, fair enough. Okay, so I'm gonna ask some questions here, and we're gonna start with Mr. Dotson. Okay, there we go, okay. Alright, Councilman Dotson.
Duh.
Duh? What is your spouse's name?
Karen.
There we go, okay, how many kids do you have?
I have two.
Two kids, and what do you do outside of city council, what is your job?
I work, well, police officer.
Alright, how long have you been a police officer?
Twenty-four years, twenty-four years, only twenty-seven now.
You're counting down to retirement soon, right?
Yes, less than two.
Less than two years, do you know the actual hours left?
No, but when I get close on it, I have a timer on my phone.
Now, did you go to college anywhere?
I did, I started off at Wegee, finished at UC City.
Awesome, awesome. And then how long were you in the military service?
For four years. You're willing to elaborate on all these, but I'm not.
That's why you can answer however many questions, you can answer however many you want to go. And where do you live in Monroe, like, it's in north, southeast, west, it sounds like that's what you're gonna give us anyway.
I live over by, I live in Foxham Estates, which is over behind mine.
Alright, now, interests outside. And then, what are your interests outside of the city council?
Completely dedicated to the service of the city council.
Okay, wow, put him on the debate stage. Awesome, we done? Yeah, like if you wanted to, it sounds like you did. Alright, Councilman McGee, we'll go through.
It's our bishop there.
Being a council is right there.
Okay, spouse, significant other's name?
Not married.
Alright, okay.
No kids.
No kids?
I've got a dog, his name is Denim.
Denim?
Yes.
What kind of dog?
He's a water walker.
Alright. How old is he?
Eight.
Eight, alright. He's kids up.
Yes.
Ever one another dog, you need to get a puppy too.
But I had to go with him, he passed.
Alright, what do you do outside of city council, what's your job?
Well, I work at the high elementary school where I attended. I support kids in math in fourth grade, seventh grade, third grade. Did that for about seven years.
Seven years, that's awesome. Where'd you go to college?
Look by the state.
Oh, okay, alright. And Monroe, where do you live?
Kind of downtown here, I'm from downtown.
Now, what are your interests outside of city council?
Well, I like to take a lot with my family, live with music kids, I like to go to concerts and things like that, I like to travel.
What's the coolest place you've been, traveled to, that you would go back?
California, I got a chance to go over to LA, actually, to ask for the cities about, near 2018. And so I also come out to the west coast and tour, so it's nice.
It is nice. Go, go, thank you. Councilman Dotson? Okay, your spouse's name?
Wayne.
Wayne, how long have you all been married?
Forty-two years, next month.
Wow. How many kids do you have?
I have to do the math for that.
How many, how many kids do you have?
Three children, three daughters and six grand, three son-in-laws and six grandchildren.
Congratulations. Now, what is your job outside of city council?
I work administration and guidance at China Baptist Academy, and occasionally I'll look back to the classroom every now and again when China goes.
What subjects do you teach, like to teach?
Like to teach.
What's your favorite subject?
I like the science because I have a background in nursing. I enjoy the English classes.
Nice, alright, where'd you go to college?
Our school of nursing.
Okay, and what did you do after that when you did nursing degree, what'd you do?
After I got finished, well, I worked and got married shortly after that, and then we had children. And once the children became school age, I got involved and they went to, to grammar school I went to, or the elder school I went to, which was Charlotte, it was an alley area, I followed them there. And I was very involved with parent groups and fatherhood groups, I was people I knew and grew up with, I lived in that area. They're gonna ask me where I live, I live up in the Bakers area. So for those who live here all the time, you know, that's where I'm from.
You were born and raised in Monroe?
Right, that's right, I wasn't born in Monroe, I was in Lancaster, South Carolina, but my parents are here and I saved my soul, so all of the clothes.
What are your interests outside of city council, what do you like to do?
Spend time with my family, my grandchildren, that were very blessed, they're all close by us, so we're involved in a lot of church activities and things like that. So they keep me busy, I love to read.
What's your favorite book? Outside of the Bible?
Wow, that's a hard one, I don't know, I'm reading six of them right now, honestly.
How about the best one you're reading right now?
The best one I'm reading right now? It's called, it's about Abraham Lincoln, it's called Lincoln's Convergence. It's really good, it sounds really boring, but it's really good, the real life should read it.
Thank you so much, alright. It is his turn. Thrives on us. Alright, Councilman Carr, what's your spouse's name?
Beautiful Diana Carr from Camden, South Carolina, I married Wayne Wayo.
Cameras are, that was paused, Bradley, they record, say it one more time. Okay, how many kids do you have?
We have one son, McCain, who's a banker, he lives in Charleston, South Carolina. He graduated from Chapelville, and it was a real struggle because I went to state, my dad went to state, my grand uncle went to state, but we still allow him in the house.
Yeah, that's a serious rivalry right there. Now, what do you do outside of council, what is your job?
We are real estate brokers and real estate developers, and that segues into what do we like to do? We love buying old properties and bringing them back to life, mostly single-family, but we have done some apartment conversions, and we like to travel.
Now, you have a lot of history in Monroe too, and that is in Ortony area, and that's in Farming, right?
Correct, correct.
And you wanna talk about this unit up here that's cotton gin?
Oh, absolutely, the building that we're in was almost fifty years envisioning to reality, and that was a passion project for my dad, who was a lifelong carmer, as was my grandfather, my great-grandfather, and my great-great-grandfather. And all were in the production of row crops, which generally in this area was cotton, and if you had cotton, you had a gin, and if you cared to, up in the lobby, my great-great-grandfather, my great-grandfather's cotton gin is on display up in the lobby. And we still have some property in Marvin, but have lived downtown in the historic district, and another family home for twenty-nine years, so I guess we're still in our start.
And?
And my dad is on the hall thing here in this building, and nothing would make him prouder than we were using this facility for a retreat like this.
Interests outside, you said you like to travel and rehab property?
We do, love to read, I generally read a book every two or three days, usually fiction, usually mysteries, usually English murder mysteries.
What's your favorite book?
Definitely A Man in Full by Tom Wolfe.
Anything else you'd like to say?
I just appreciate everybody being here today, and like I said earlier, I wish we had done this in years past, I think this kind of time together in a more comfortable setting allows for a lot more free thought and sharing of ideas, and I look forward to seeing all the wonderful connections turn into positive things for the city. And thanks to everybody here for making it happen.
Very good, thank you. Councilman, Councilman Anthony, tell us your sweet husband's name.
His name is Richard Evernath, thirty-three, he's dead, he died in August of 2012, we've been married forty-three years.
Yay. That's a moment. How many kids do you have and their names? Four kids, what are their names? What are your kids' names?
Scott, Grant, Sharon, and Shanta.
And you have grandchildren and great-grandchildren?
I have three grandchildren and one great-grand.
Alright, that's awesome. And what do you do for work outside of city council?
Well, I'm retired from the Girl Scouts, I'm retired from the Treasury Department, but what I do, I, I'm a state treasurer for the political party, I'm a treasurer for Eastern Star Group Hates, I'm a state representative for City District Twelve, and trustee of my church. My children call me the Phil, because I get, "S, he can love you."
That's so awesome.
But I'm a person, I like to travel.
Yeah, yeah, so you like to travel, where do you like to go?
I like the islands, and then we have six states to go in the United States to work with.
Wow. So where'd you go to school?
Five hundred courses where I graduated from, I went to several, but I'm pregnant.
There we go, and you, where do you live in Monroe?
I live in St. Louis.
You have a lot of history in Winchester too?
I do, I was born at eight oh six Winchester Avenue, I have a lot of history, like my grandfather owned another land on Winchester, and my grandmother owns it, she actually owned the house that we first moved in. And interesting to think about, her name was Mary Boewell Redford, in World War II, she purchased that house because the black soldiers, wives didn't know where to stay, she had a contract with the visiting party, she provided a home for them.
Wow, that's something. And what is, so you like to travel, what are your other interests outside of city council, what do you like to do? I mean, I call you sometimes or talk to you, and you're out gardening, so that's one thing, and what's your favorite thing?
Yeah, I like to try to garden, I don't really go to the field. And I'm sort of on the board, so I'm usually pretty busy.
Yeah, you sound way busier than all of us, alright, well, thank you so much, Councilman Anthony, and we're gonna keep going around the table here to, oh yeah, putting them on the spot.
Give it your best.
I was not expecting this, alright. Give it your best shot, okay. What is your spouse's name?
Jewel, with two L's.
Two L's, one W.
Yes.
How many kids do you have?
I've got three, three sons.
Grandbabies?
Two, two granddaughters, two.
And your job outside of city management? Being a husband?
Yeah, yeah, being a husband, dad, and granddad, yeah.
Those are important jobs, for sure. Where'd you go to school, college?
Graduated from Winthrop, attended Winthropson, and graduated from Wallahalla School.
Where's that at, by the way?
Wallahalla.
Wallahalla. It sounds like ball-halla.
Wallahalla, Wallahalla is in the very far western point of South Carolina, about sixteen miles north of Clums.
And now, you have a, well, before I get to that, you don't live in Monroe, but you have a farm, is that right, or no? Do you like?
So, so my dad still farms.
Okay, okay.
So retired land surveyor, consulting contractor, and cattleman, and he is getting ready to turn ninety, and still runs somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and dollars.
He'll keep you young.
Yeah.
Now, different question, what got you into being the city manager, how'd you get here? I mean, outside of political, that's not a question. What did you do first, how about that? What's your pathway, your job pathway?
My job, my job pathway, straight out of school, was management training program with Federated Farm Stores, that led me on a path through operations management, HR. During the early eighties, the economy was really sketchy, there were all kinds of mergers and acquisitions and junk bonds, if anybody remembers the junk bond days. So there was a lot of uncertainty in the marketplace, and I think during my time in the private sector, working for this, I call it working for the same company, but it changed hands probably seven times. And then I had the news one day that my position was being transferred to a suburb of Washington DC, and I was already having to travel up there about once a month, and we had just built a house over in the Marvin community, and this was before Marvin was, the Village of Marvin was the Village of Marvin, it's just thirty-two, let's go. And I was, and I'm not, this is where I'm gonna raise my family, I'm not, I'm not moving to Washington DC and, you know, doing that, and as, you know, I was fortunate that Union County had an opening or was recruiting for an HR director, I was fortunate enough to land that job and was with them for maybe four to join the city.
Thank you, sir. And interests outside of, what do you, what's your favorite thing to do?
Favorite thing to do, shoot a lot of sporty clays, generally whatever my sons have for me to do or want to go do, whether that's playing golf or shooting sporty clays or, you know, working on their cars. Yeah, so, so I, my, I took a week of vacation off and my son bought this junk piece of a Jeep, and I ended up taking the transmission out and, you know, putting new clutch in, doing all that kind of stuff, and that was how I spent my vacation. But recently purchased a nineteen forty-seven Lincoln Continental Cabriolet convertible, so that's my project right now. If you come downtown tonight, you might see it.
Here we go. Thank you, Mark. Assistant manager, oh, you can't run, ride. What's your spouse's name?
Mark.
Mike?
Mark.
Mark, okay.
And my last manager was named Mark, so.
There we go, okay.
You got a Mark name.
Alright, kids?
I've got two, they're both in college, one is at High Point, the other one is at State.
Funny story, my niece knows, and has sorority sisters with her daughter.
Yes, they are both Sigma Kappas, and her name is Promie, right?
Yeah, Promie, yeah, Promie, that's right. And we know what your job title is, but how about we go, where did you go to school?
I went to undergrad at UNC Charlotte and then graduate school at NC State. I grew up in Wilkes-Barre, so in high school, at Westwood High School.
There's some NC State fans in the house.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I hope I won't get disappointed this season. That was not a day at all. There's some, no, I like watching good sports, good football, good basketball. And where do you live here in Monroe area?
I live in the downtown, I'm right across from the First Baptist Church, so I'm renting from a woman, I'm renting upstairs at her house until my husband can get here, get a job and get here, I'm good.
That's great, that's great, and he's a nice man too, so I hope that works out here soon. Now, what are your interests outside of working for the city, what do you like to do?
Well, I like to do anything family-related, I like to go to the NC State football games, we typically do that as a family, as an extended family, my husband's family, we're all, do those games together. I like to travel at Christmas with my family, I do a lot of walking and running, and I got a big place, and I've had a lot of time to do that recently, but yeah, I kind of, I read to mysteries, Stuart Woods is my favorite, favorite author.
Awesome, okay, very good, any pets?
Yeah, I've got a dog and a cat, so Buzz, Buzz, he's, he's the dog, he's about fourteen, a little Jack Russell type, and we have a cat.
Alright, thank you, thank you, we're gonna come to Richard and then we'll.
Michael's right there.
Come on, Richard, Terry's like Beverly to get up, by the way. He's edging towards the door. Alright, Richard, what's your spouse's name?
Susan.
Susan, and how many kids do you have?
Four.
Four, any grandbabies?
One granddad.
Alright, and what is your job outside of the city?
Father-in-law, Craig Lynn.
Just as a trick question. And where'd you go to school?
Graduated from UNC and then went to Wake Forest Law School.
How long did that take you?
Well, the whole process. The whole process, seven years.
Seven years, a lot of school. Wow.
I did undergrad for six.
You're not sure it's the same again, wow. Alright, so where do you live in Monroe?
I live right on the edge of Monroe and Unionville. It was choice between Unionville taking my neighborhood of the city of Monroe, Terry was so kind and said, "We think you can do it."
Now, what is your favorite thing to do outside of city council?
I'm really pretty simple, and my, so my idea of a good day is going out and working in the yard and doing stuff like that, and I like working with my hands and doing stuff because I see instant results, and in my job, you usually don't see instant results.
Yeah, that's great, anything else you'd like to share, any pets?
Got a Scottish terrier named Mac, and I have a son that's a lord, and he was right here for a little while, and now he's on his own.
That's great, what type of law does he practice?
He actually does the state administration. And his other son is a dentist, and I'm actually going on a safari in about two weeks.
There we go. Where to?
Going to South Africa.
I've been to safari in Kenya, it's an incredible experience. There we go, thank you, sir, and one more person? Let's see, Mr. Sholder. Me? Alright, I can answer your question, alright. Mr. Sholder.
Hey, you too, man.
Okay, what's your spouse's name?
Dick.
And how many kids do you have?
I've got two kids and four grandkids.
Pretty much, now, your job outside of city, if there is one, or something you'd like to do?
I don't have a job outside the city because I'm full-time here, but I like to play golf, I'm sure I love to play.
What's your handicap?
I stopped keeping records, I play for pride. And I like to do woodwork, and I love to get back to the coast and do everything, the changes in my hobby.
Where, where on the coast?
Usually the south coast, but I lived on the coast, worked on the coast.
Okay, alright, now, where'd you go to school?
NC State.
NC State?
And Campbell Law School.
Wow, Campbell, okay. And you have some history here in Monroe, or where do you, where do you live?
Yeah, I live off Seventy-four, not the same development.
By close by?
That way a little bit.
Okay, that's right. Save some gas money, and you mentioned a few interests and stuff, but what's your favorite thing to do outside of city?
I get golf, I kind of woodwork and I do changes.
Now, what's the coolest thing you've built recently with work?
Oh, gosh, I like to type, just natural wood, just a piece of oak, it turns into something, and I made some huge blocks with clay, and I'm taking my own natural, natural.
And you sell any of that stuff, you still plant it?
I give away stuff.
There we go, that's cool, well, thank you, Terry. Either someone can question me or I can do it, doesn't matter. Okay, be nice, always nice to you, Dick. So what is your cell phone number? Nine-one-one. So what is your spouse's name?
Lauren.
What are your children's?
My oldest is Adeline, she's gonna be twenty this Sunday, I have a sixteen-year-old son, Lawson, I have a thirteen-year-old daughter, Benning, I have an eleven-year-old daughter, Chapel, I have a nine-year-old son, Beckham, and a six, almost seven-year-old daughter, Begnole.
I would ask you what you do outside of council. There's only two options, and either one of them, either one of them. So what is your regular job?
I own a audio/video company, we do smart homes, businesses, we do a lot of like boardrooms, we do network IT around the country, we have a house worship division that does churches, full design, and then there's electrical division as well, and I have a, it's on to its own company, like a social media, and like viral content, video content creation company.
How long have you been doing that?
As far as the AB side goes, about, since I was a kid, because my dad was a low voltage security guy, so, you know, instead of all the wireless transmitters on all the windows and doors and stuff, my dad taught me how to wire, you know, through existing sheet rock and walls and construction and all that stuff, so I've been doing it since I was a kid, working with him, prompting addicts.
So your dad was a MacIver?
Pretty much, yes, yes, yes.
So what college did you go to?
Well, I started at Lincoln University for football, I ended up leaving because I also played at Piedmont High School, and I was tired of losing already. Not saying Lincoln's bad now, but I got tired of it, and shortly after, I transferred to Appalachian State and finished two years there. And then I got a degree, that was in business administration, I got a degree from Liberty Online, went back to school in two thousand and eleven, went to. went back to school in two thousand and eleven, went to two thousand and thirteen, got a degree in rural religion with a focus on politics.
This is where do you live in Monroe? I'm gonna act as your council and say let's not, let's not do that. But what, what part of Monroe do you live?
Um, uh, hold on, west, or north? All right, west.
So outside of your children and your business, what do you like to do outside of council?
Honestly, um, I do play the guitar, don't know if I can necessarily, uh, sing, but, uh, um, I like to spend time with my family, to be honest. It's, you know, I'm kind of a family guy, whenever I, not the family guy, by the way. But, you know, I, I enjoy spending time with my family, it's just a break from so many other things that are, you know, so many different places you get pulled from, so I like to do that.
Well, since you were so kind to us, I'll open to the floor, does anyone have any individual personal questions? At all? No. Okay, okay. All right, guys, couple more things now, appreciate that, and humoring us for that. Um, hopefully, we can all just continue to get to know each other. Um, uh, one of the cards I have up here is a question about the status of Lake Minnehaha. So... Okay? Any?
And the fish.
Input on fishing?
Where did that fish go?
I could, I could, I could.
Sure.
So, the, uh, the work that was done to address the, the drainage of the lake, uh, is, is working. Um, we went up there, we had, we had plenty of brains to check it out, but, um, it was, we witnessed it kind of, uh, keeping at the level of the lake, the lake, uh, at the, at the level it needs to be, will continue to improve on doing that. We are in the process of, um, we've removed a lot of the old, the old, um, structures that were out there, and we're in the process right now of putting, uh, putting a contract together for, uh, the, the walkover here, uh, a outdoor classroom and, um, some other smaller amenities out there so we can kind of open that back up to the, to our, to our programs for, uh, our programs for our kids and our vet centers for, uh, programming.
Okay, got a question here. And we asked, so they asked, why don't we promote from within rather than pay thousands of dollars for headhunters when we have candidates to fill available positions? So, well, I'll just say, as a business owner, personally, I think, um, and this is not really a question for me to answer, but I will tell you that as a business owner, for me personally, biggest thing is culture, right? Whenever I have, um, uh, interviewed individuals, for me, culture matters a lot. And whenever, as people move up, I know, and I'm pretty certain on everyone's intentions around here too, is that the real goal is that, um, the way you move up, at least in my business, is you build up the people below you. So, it's incredibly important for me to build people up that are surrounding you so that when you move on to the next thing, if you obviously are, you know, moving up in life or up in other positions, that, um, it's important to have people ready below you to do that. Now, um, I'm not gonna completely answer this question because that would be more of a managerial thing, but I would also say that that's just my personal input on this specifically. If anybody else wants to say, uh, anything, um, council or, um, Mark?
So I'm just sitting here trying to, to think, we've got, uh, one position that we have, uh, used as executive recruiter for, and that's the human resource director position. That, that is an incredibly, um, technical, complex job. It has a great deal of, uh, impact on the organization. My number one goal is to make sure that we have the very best talent in place, right, to do the job. So I made the decision to use an executive recruiter for that particular position. Um, we are right now, um, and we had, is it a hundred and ten? A hundred and ten applicants that, that applied for that job, um, and we are in the process of delinquent final, uh, interviews for that. But the purpose is to make sure that we get absolutely the very best talent, uh, for this organization. Now, to your point just a minute ago, uh, the preferable thing is always to develop in-house talent. Um, that is one thing that, um, is on my goals, my personal goals, I set for myself, uh, and that I will be, uh, that you will see investments being made in, uh, in the recommended budget, uh, for this year. The employee viewpoint survey told us very clearly that, uh, our employees wanted those opportunities. It's, 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 it's always preferable if you have developed talent in-house. And, and right now, um, we have some gaps.
Well, it's the same thing like in my business too, what we do, you know, you try and equip the people surrounding you. Some of that is the training, I think is what, you know, we're, what you're alluding to, and, you know, being able to offer those things, and with new administration in place, having that ability to offer that is now on the table, right? To offer that training so that people are, you know, better prepared, things like that. Because that should be the ultimate goal, right? Because if you're not building up the current talent you have, then what are we doing? And I think that that's incredibly important for me, um, as well. Any other questions? This is your opportunity, anyone?
I'm gonna add something to that. So, for all the directors that are in here right now, um, you've heard me say this in, in the past, and I'm gonna say it now in front of city council, sitting right here and everybody else, but, uh, as, as a director, uh, in this organization, your job should be to develop your replacement, to develop those individuals under you, uh, to succeed in their careers just like you were given the opportunity to succeed in your career. And how that, how that gets done, you know, I think we all need to work on that process together.
I just know that it would be great for us to have a professional development plan in place, encourage everyone to be able to go out, I know for H R, there are certificates and different things that you can get and obtain, and those are things we need to put in front of people so that when we do have someone leave, someone can step right in and fill their shoes and continue that culture that we have here in Monroe. Because you never know what you're gonna get when you get that outside person in, and it may not work out just because of the personality and where they came from. But it would be awesome, especially with our code enforcement, just different things, different purposes, people move forward, so that we might have to look outside.
I sort of, I would say that I think it's good if at all possible, you have someone in-house who doesn't already understand culture, doesn't already know relationships, so I like that.
Yes, yes. Well, I am gonna say, what's really encouraging for me is, in my business, what I, when I go out and hire, I mean, we're still young, we're about, you know, ten years, ten years old, and, um, it's, it's finding new talent. And the fact that we have so many employees here that have been here for a long time is awesome. It really is encouraging, just to see that we have Father Time works for us in the fire department. I was just trying to lighten the mood up, man. No, but we, we, we really are thankful for the fact that we have people here, Bridget's been here for how long now?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven? Y'all, like, this is, this is huge, like, and, and here's the reality too, is, you know, Ron Fowler, not picking on him, he literally is a staple here in this city. Everybody knows him, and it really adds validity to the character of our city, right? It's the same thing with Bridget, it adds character to this city because people wanna be here, and it shows, and that through all the ups and downs, it's not easy, working in, as a public servant in the background in a political arena, and y'all have done it, you know, so hats off to y'all. And I do wanna say that because just seeing the dedication of the employees here is incredibly encouraging. It just is, and, um, you know, being a part of, even with, um, Ms. Deborah, just seeing how well-respected she was, that's just cool, you know, so I'm gonna say that. All right, guys, um, I'll turn it back over to, let's see, um, Pete, have any? Yeah?
Yes. I think it's really, um, it's bad that we only had those two questions, and I know really well that we had questions. So, I don't understand why you don't go ahead and put them in, because this is the same place, and that's sort of what we go and learn, rather than wondering, just go ahead and ask.
And listen, if y'all guys have any questions, um, by the time that, um, we're done, you know, we have another spot here where we're gonna talk about next, that's at the very end of recap, then, um, you know, feel free to ask, bring those back up, okay? Thank you. I, I don't think Pete needs any in the direction.
I've been here as long as Ron, so... But, uh, this afternoon, we have, uh, several projects that Pete's been working on, uh, in a couple of different areas that we're gonna cover with city council. Um, the first, uh, has to do with the, the golf course facility and some of the renovations that, uh, are underway there, uh, along with the, the potential of actually adding a totally new offering at the golf course, uh, along with an additional revenue stream. So, uh, very excited to hear more about that, Pete.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you, I'm gonna hold the microphone and make Bradley work a little as I move, but probably not too much. Uh, I'm gonna talk to you mostly about the ballroom, uh, because that's what we're moving forward with. We have, you all have approved the renovations at the pro shop. We're in the midst of getting construction drawings for that, and hopefully, uh, get that underway by this winter and have the, the pro shop portion of our renovations done, uh, by the spring. So, we're really excited for that, and we thank you for that. Uh, with me, I have, uh, John Miller, our, uh, general manager head pro, he has some more information. You all got a brief presentation of this during the budget process, and basically, what it is, is we want to, we think it's the best use of our beautiful historic, uh, ballroom is to turn it into something that can be profitable, something that can be a destination, and something that complements our golf course. Uh, it is a beautiful facility, it is a historic facility, uh, Councilman Carr can, can give us a lot more information on it, uh, but it's early forties builds, uh, it's been modified a couple of times over the years. Um, but it has served as a facility that we rent out, and it basically gets abused, and it hasn't been up-kept, up-kept, hasn't been kept up the way it needed to over the past several decades. And it's at a point where either we put a lot, a lot of money to bring it up to that ballroom-type facility and still not recoup our money, or we look at a reuse of that facility that can bring in revenue, that can create another new destination and complements, uh, our city. I think everybody in here is very familiar with the building, with the inside, with the flaws, and with the positives of it. If at any time you have any questions, please, uh, let me know. I'm not gonna dwell too much on the facility, we've talked about challenges, the age, the sustainability from a staffing and marketing and location, um, there are challenges for that ballroom to be that destination. Not that it can't be, but if you wanna use it as a rental facility, we need to be prepared to upgrade it and deal with all the headings that come with operating a rental facility. So, what we've done is John and I have, have talked to a lot of PGA professionals throughout the, throughout the United States, and one thing that we've found is that digital golf has become, and John, you correct me if I'm wrong, there's more digital rounds of golf being played in the United States than there are physical rounds out on a golf course at this time. So, you know, we've all seen the top golfs, and, and those aren't, top golf is great, it's probably not for the true golfer, it's more for the guys that wanna go out there and have fun, have some drinks for groups and stuff like that. But these indoor simulator facilities are, are phenomenal, um, for the golfers and for events. We did take a trip up to, um, towards Archdale, to Holly, Holly Bridge Golf Links, and this is their facility, they have six indoor hitting bays, uh, inside their facility, and had a really, really neat vibe, very cool structure out there, uh, with a full bar, with a full kitchen, and their pro shop all in one. So, ideally, that would be the way to go, we don't have the money, time, or energy to, to do that. So, what we're looking at proposing is taking the ballroom and converting that into an indoor driving range, for the most part, with five simulators within that space, with seating, doing some work on the outside, and having a, a destination, a place where golfers, where, um, Councilman McGee is not a golfer, but can go there with some friends, get lunch, and, and see that facility and kind of hang out. Uh, like I said, five hundred and thirty million out in, indoor rounds, you're not dependent on the weather, cold rain, snow, sleet, uh, it's really good for, for younger people, for folks new to golf. You can come there and learn the game without being out in the public and have that scrutiny of good golfers behind you. Uh, just a lot of different, um, opportunities for this facility. Again, I know you, you guys have seen this, and I know we want to look at some of the, the meat of this. So we are looking at five simulators, we have a, a plan for the inside there, um, you know, the simulators, we're looking at having them available eight hours, uh, seven days a week. You know, we're looking at the numbers. Our finance staff has done a very detailed ten-year financial plan for this work, but, you know, unrealistically, just, and, and all the numbers you're gonna hear are just from the simulator use, not merchandise, not food, not beer and wine, not drink sales. So if we use all those simulators all the time, you're gonna get a 1.1, never gonna happen, fifty percent, never gonna happen. A realistic number that we're playing with is anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-three percent of revenue of, of those digital, uh, hitting bays being used. So you're looking at roughly a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar revenue stream just from the use of the simulators alone. Now, when we went to Holly Ridge, we talked to the owner of Holly Ridge, and our numbers are right on par with what they are, what they booked. So, we have, we believe that that's a very realistic number, we have a higher population, we have a, an established clientele, and we're in a better market than we're in the other golf courses, but they're below High Point near Winston-Salem. And again, that three hundred and thirty-six, three hundred and sixty thousand is not with food and beverage sales, and not with any merchandise sales, that would be, uh, additional. Anybody have any questions on that piece?
Not on that piece.
Okay.
You may, may I? Um, I went out that year and I enjoyed it, you said something, the structure, that, that really, really is a story. And for a lot of reasons, it has a lot of people, a lot of families that have flown up here to go because a lot of people have dreamed of having their wedding, a wedding reception there, so that part of it. part of it, I would ever want us to come to a point where revenue stream is, for a period, because of service, of, of service, so I just won't make that point, that's not what we're, what we're, what we're trying to add.
Right, I, I, I think I understand your question. We're, it's, it's not just about the money, it's not just about, currently, for the past several years, we have lost money, and probably decades, we have lost money in operating that ballroom as a rental facility. Uh, so, yes, we're not doing it just for money. Yes, Councilman Carr?
Going back to the trope, which you said, organized, it was really good, and I really appreciate that, Tom. It is a rural area.
It is a rural area, and their dining room was full, the porches were full, patios were full, because it's a destination for people to eat lunch, it's somewhere different, they had great food, uh, they did have a bar, um, and people were using their simulator area for events that were programmed for lunch meetings and for evening events, and everything from kids' birthday parties to bachelor parties, uh, I mean, they were hitting it on all cylinders, and they were, it would be like if you had a facility between Marshall and Waitsburg. It's, so just imagine, I mean, we've got the captive audience of all these Wrigley University students, who I think would keep us busy.
Yeah, we went on a Thursday afternoon, uh, there were, one, two, three, four, five of us that went, and we toured, we met with the, the owner, and then we had lunch. We had to sit at the bar, we couldn't, we couldn't get a table at this place, and everybody in there that was eating were not golfers. So, it, it was a, it was a neat dynamic where it wasn't just golf, or you're just not making money on top of the back of your already established clientele. So that, that was very interesting and telling for me.
I just want, want to ask this question too, because there's, there's other, other, uh, space at the country club, there's the downstairs, we do miss a lot of attention, um, and then there's a really beautiful upstairs piece that, um, I know this would be another phase and another thing we think about, but I understand exactly what you mean about a, a historic piece, but then if we're in a position where we can do something like this, and it brings people there, we can also offer that same flavor if we can develop those pieces, is that, that room I saw upstairs?
Yes, ma'am.
Beautiful, the flooring's beautiful, the fireplace is there.
So what, what you'll see a little later on is, I think the best way to approach this, and, and inevitably y'all's decision, is to phase it.
Right.
This first phase, let's get the simulators in, let's do some minor modifications outside. Second phase, let's build out the back and have more of a kitchen. Third phase, you've got the downstairs, the, the middle room, and the upstairs. So, you know, first phase is getting the simulators in there, getting the business up and running, and trying to generate the, the funds that will help-
The revenue to do all the other-
That will help sustain and do all the other pieces. So you see the revenue, you know, you wanna, you wanna dazzle you with numbers. It, it's realistic, these numbers are gonna be better than what our numbers are now, but to get there, it's gonna, it's going to cost. So, what we based on are costs, um, for these simulator bays, and, well, we'll talk to phases. So, basically, this first phase is enhance the renovation, the front porch, get the, uh, simulators in there, and do some initial parking, uh, improvements. Second phase would be some bathroom, rear porch addition, rear patio iconic structure, well, uh, out there, kitchen improvements, and then the third phase would be those private rooms, downstairs, upstairs renovations. So getting into the cost, so, a little hard to see with the light, so this is one example of how it may be, we're, we're playing with that, we're shifting, we will have five simulators in there, we think five is the magic number, we want to have enough space to have the simulators, but also have some seating, some high tops, some cocktail tables in areas to, to accommodate folks as well. And we do have some upgraded drawings, but the simulators are gonna be roughly 220 to 250,000 dollars for the five simulators. Estimates for the initial Phase One construction costs are roughly 350,000 dollars. And with that, as you can see, is extending the, the front porch line, enclosing the, the portico, raising that up, and having some outdoor, outdoor seating, porch area on the side that runs parallel to hole number one, and then just some minor other, uh, enhancements inside the facility. The parking lot is a challenge already, so this is a good time, if we were gonna do this, we need to put some money into that parking lot. Uh, for those of you that have been, have been out to the golf course, you've got the parking lot in between the pro shop and the ballroom, there's some parking behind the ballroom, and then there's the lower lot. So, we need to reconfigure that parking to maximize it, so the folks coming for the simulators don't bump into the folks that are there for golf. So we have that issue already when we do have events and activities out there, if that makes sense. Yes, sir?
I have a picture of the building as it looked originally, so as far as the historic homage and connectivity, iconic flair, uh, this would actually be restoring it, so that would be, that would be creating income and resurrection.
Yeah, we're, we're not doing anything major, majorly structural on the outside or inside of the facility, so, you know, I, I hate to say that this is something we do and we put money into it, it can always go back the other way. If that's something you want, uh, either way, there, there's going to need to be some money put into this building. And if we don't do it this way, then we need to do it a different way, or else this building's gonna fall in on itself.
Basically, considering that, uh, it's not a landmark, it's not designated?
It's not designated, it does have a, a placard on the building, uh, but we don't really, we're not anticipating to do much structurally to it, plus it's a city facility, so it's not like you lose tax credits and all that fun stuff.
I don't know if those were available to add some amendments to it.
Oh, okay.
Also, what number have we already approved for the, we've not approved this?
You, you, you all have not approved anything for this part of the project? For the pro shop, I believe it's about 350,000 dollars that was approved for the renovation and construction of the, of the pro shop. So there's been nothing approved, uh, at this level. We did talk about it during the budget, and I'll bring more, uh, FERC numbers for you all to, to look at. So one of the big issues is, is looking at staffing costs as well, uh, we're looking at, at, at two full-time people to staff it, and several customer service folks. We will have the, the pro shop, the golf pro, and other folks already on site, so when we went to the other golf course, everybody was doing everything. So you had folks running orders out to people, taking orders, and, and everybody chipped in, and I see that with, with what we have already established at the golf course, a lot of interaction between the current staff, staff at the pro shop, and folks that will be manning this facility as well. So we're anticipating that the staffing cost roughly 252,000 dollars for that, with two full-time people and, uh, you know, a pool of part-time folks. And then general operation cost with electric, we'll have to get some, some truer costs as far, as far as ordering food, supplies, and, and see how that goes, it's gonna be a learning curve. We're not looking at doing a full-fledged kitchen right out of the gate. I think in, in our discussions, you know, you start putting in a full grill, cooktop, I think that we start looking at that as the second phase. Not to say we're not offering food, but we're not cooking the cooked-to-order food at this time, you know, we might do, you know, uh, pizzas, hot dogs, nachos, and more food like that barbecue that we can get that's not cooked on-site per se, um, because that kitchen, that adds a whole new element of making that kitchen, uh, restaurant quality. I think we need to get there, because as you all that went to the Holly Ridge saw, that place was popping, that place was, was busy, and I think that's where some, some very big additional funds can come in, but I do think it's very important for us to get the simulator piece in first, to start generating some money, generating the awareness, and then building upon that foundation.
As you mentioned earlier, as a non-golfer, that piece was kind of impressive to me to see a lot of the people that were there were coming for lunch, um, and then also as a non-golfer, I could come and go play at a, at a simulator, bring friends, and hang out, but not necessarily want to go shoot golf, so-
Right.
Just adds another element of just a place to kind of come and convene with friends and family without playing golf per se.
Sure. Yes, sir. So again, in working with finance and developing the, these costs, you know, we, we're, we're looking at, at basically a million dollars, and we'll get to that, for, for an initial investment into this facility, and all, all that we have. You know, this, this, this number, and again, I want us to focus on the 30% usage, uh, the simulator, operating profit-loss, just from the simulators alone, the revenue that we're hoping to generate is gonna cover the cost of the simulators. Granted, it's a little misleading because you're, you're taking into other, the construction and staffing numbers, but, um, this is a really good build-out that, that our finance folks have done for us, taking into the account the anticipated revenues that, that each of the simulator percentage use will generate. So we really need to make sure that we're in that 25 to 33% usage, so we're, we're making money, and again, this is just on simulate. For a great example, we're, we're making 50,000 dollars in retail sales profit just in the pro shop, another 50,000 dollar profit in food and beverage sales just out of the pro shop, give or take. So, you know, you're gonna take almost another 100,000 dollars in beer, wine, alcohol, and merchandise sales in there as well. Again, the, the food, beverage, merchandise sales are unknown, um, but it's based on the 25% usage revenues from all sources, the plan should, should net a year-one profit over loss. So, um, it's a lot better than what we have, putting mandates, throwing money on pressure washing, painting, and touching up paint inside the facility, only to lose money in operations, staff, and seeing the building steadily decline.
Is this an opportunity for tourism dollars?
It could be, uh, I'll defer to, to Lisa and accounting, but in my opinion, I do, I do believe that it could be a good use, but the, the danger with that, Councilman McGee and, and manager and, and finance director, correct me, if tourism puts the money into it, tourism gets the money back out of it. So this could be a benefit for the city, uh, towards the city's general fund and towards the operation of the golf course. We heard yesterday where, where, um, Scott Plard is gonna shut down the front end of the golf course for possibly two months, if we had this up and running while that was taking place, we would be killing it with this. So, you know, I see this and the golf course working together to, to generate revenue for the city.
So tourism gets all of that money back?
It's, it's, it's complicated, um, so the science center, I'll use the science center as an example, money raised from admission and revenue from the science center stays in a tourism fund. None of that money goes into a city operating general fund, because tourism is paying for all of the, everything in the science center. Is that, and Lisa, am I correct, am I saying that right, Mark?
Yes.
With, with regards to the tourism capital dollars.
So, could, let me ask you this-
Yes, sir.
So would that money, tourism money be able to go towards marketing this?
Yes, sir, so tourism has capital and operating. Uh, our tourism board, the mayor chair, was very generous, and we put a lot of money into marketing for this upcoming year, so I would clearly see this and any other destination-type activity within the city falls well within that marketing budget.
With, with this particular project, I mean, you would want to have some type of, I would believe, some type of marketing plan from day one, the moment the doors open.
Yes, sir.
Pushing it as hard as we can-
Yeah.
-to get as many people as we can.
John, John has developed, we've got about 60, how many pages is that, John?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five-page business plan, because that was one of the things you asked for last time, uh, after this meeting, I'll be happy to get that into all of your hands digitally for you to look at. John, John and I worked on our plan separate from finance, and our numbers are, are very, very, very close. So yes, marketing, and, you know, this is gonna, we, if you guys approve the money now, we can't start anything until January, because we do have some events still at the, uh, country club. We start, we didn't take new events out there past January 1, but we do have some that were on the books from earlier in the year that we feel we need to honor.
Annually, what do we put into the, the ballroom to keep it just at what it's?
Probably about 50, 50 to 60,000 dollars a year.
So that's just to keep it in the condition that it's in?
Correct, correct, utilities and, and minor maintenance stuff and everything, yes, sir.
Were there any plans to do anything with that ballroom? I mean, was there any upgrades that you were planning to do in the future if you were to leave it as a ballroom?
Yeah, so initially, when, when the manager came in to the city, there was a lot of talk in there, a lot of looking through there, and then we brought this opportunity and, uh, have brought this forward, but there, we can, in, in, in saying that we have not, you know what I mean, because we've been focusing on this plan since earlier this year. But if, if that's, if that's council's wish, I will bring some hard numbers for that as well.
Well, Mike, and I'll stop.
Yes, sir.
But my, my, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, is the next three years, what will we spend on that ballroom alone, just in, you know, in anticipation of doing upgrades to it, or just to keep it where it's at? That would be money that can be used towards this.
Absolutely, so, yeah, we're-
If you understand what I'm saying.
Uh, uh, yes, I, I get what you're saying, so we, we spend 50 to, to 60,000 dollars a year already for this, so we would save 180,000 of this-
To go towards that.
To go towards what we're moving forward to. And I really want to emphasize that, we're gonna do this work to the facility, we're, we'll, we'll extend the patio, we'll enclose the port, portico chairs, am I saying that right?
Portico.
Portico. We'll enclose all that, and those improvements will be made, we'll make some improvements inside. The simulators, the only structural thing is something hanging out down from the ceiling for the most part. So again, if, if this plan, we do it and nobody, you know, if we build it and nobody shows up, we take those simulators, we put them on GovDeals, sell them, get 150 grand back, and we're in, actually in better shape, because now the facility's in better shape, and we can move towards that.
All right, now-
Yes, sir.
Um, how much, or how often is this facility right now being rented out?
So, it's a little tricky right now, I'm gonna use last year's numbers, because when we started this process, we stopped taking rentals, because we didn't think it would be fair if at a certain time, we, we had to tell these people, you have to go somewhere else. Um, so I would say this facility is rented, before we stopped doing that, twice a month.
Twice a month.
Twice a month, give or take.
And the revenue on that, like, for the rentals was probably very low?
Yeah, so the, the revenue-
1,100 each.
Yeah, so, so we, we bumped that fee schedule up last year, you guys were generous enough to allow us to bump that up, but at times, it was 400 dollars for the whole day of that facility, until we bumped it up, and now it's 1,100 dollars. Um, so if you have, and, and that's the max, so city employees get a discount, nonprofits get the discount, you know what I mean, um, so we were probably, you got the number? Okay, so our total expenditures was 63,000, uh, dollars last year, and our rentals, we brought in 46,000. So we're, we lost almost 20,000 dollars. Thank you, sir.
So I mean, it really, it, it's trying to utilize the space that we have and maximize the output.
Yes, sir.
Right, that's, that's really what this sounds like, and at the end of the day, I like how you kind of finished that up, is we're not really, we're still fixing up this facility, and we're not really losing anything by, if it just completely just-
Yes, sir.
-watched off of.
The parking lot improvements are needed as well. So basically, you know, wanna look at it this way, you're gonna spend 350,000 dollars in improvements to the facility. You know what I mean, the, the parking lot improvements, they, they're gonna have to happen over the next year or two, uh, and the improvements inside, and- And the improvements inside, and mindful, the golf course is killing it. We're 40,000-plus rounds a year. We are busy, we are hopping, and you have a lot of new senior growth and development, residential growth and development along that 601 South corridor. So this is going to be a destination, in my opinion.
I have one more question for you.
Yes, sir.
And do you see this being competing business between the two? As far as the, it's not going to, we wouldn't be bringing and doing all of this and all of a sudden those rounds.
Actually, 30% of golfers that use, that also use simulators increase the number of rounds they play on a golf course. So the, your avid golfer who's, who we predict will be about 60% of our market, they actually play more rounds on a golf course. So you're taking them and actually generating additional revenue through the golf course. Right now, there's nobody in our area that we have competition with as far as simulators. The closest one is up in Huntersville, and you do have one in Fort Mill. I can tell you that I've been to those facilities, and this is by far would be the, it'd be premier. And like Pete said, it'll be a destination. Topgolf is losing, but Topgolf is a glorified driving range. It's not, it's not for the avid golfer. 60% of the market we're looking at will be your avid golfers. 30% will be for families, you know, coming out, enjoying a day. And 10% for people like Mr. McKee that just want to come and hang out. You know, there's TVs, they watch sports. It's, one of the, I can tell you, one of the reasons that Topgolf is losing money also is the fact of real golfers don't go there. They go play golf simulators, and they use that to practice, get better, take that out to the golf course.
And also.
Thank you, sir.
Pete, so the simulators, they do more than just golf, right?
They can, they can, you know. So each of the simulators with the software that we get, we get a package. And that includes 40, 50 different golf courses, everything from Pebble Beach to St. Andrews. But there are some, I want to say gimmicky things where it's, you know, kids' archery or soccer stuff, just different things like that that can be used, you know. We might designate one like the other facility has that might be for that. We really want to keep it golf-focused, but we do have that opportunity to do that. And again, as a teaching tool for, you know, I think I said it during the budget stuff, for inner-city kids, for kids that have not been exposed to golf, this is just a great way to get them in there without them feeling intimidated, laughed at, looked at, or judged.
Well, to be honest with you, inner-city kids might come and play a couple times, but they're not going to end up after ever being golfers again for it. So I want us to be realistic, and everything we do, I want it to be inclusive. Plus, I don't know how expensive it is, but I'm looking at the whole city's road. Maybe a third of the fans in that field would struggle.
Can we think of a program then? Where, where that quite possibly, that if they're like, you know, young children or, you know, middle school or high school or below, and they can live in the city of the road, and they can discount any of that?
Absolutely, we're wide open to that.
If any particular, we don't want to do anything that's.
And we can do something for parks and recreation.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's, the possibilities are endless. We, you know, the biggest thing we need is to go ahead, the allocation of the money, then we'll develop that fee schedule. You know, we're anticipating that the costs are $40 to $60 per hour for this facility for use of Peach Bay. But you could have four, five, six people in there doing that. So, you know, it gets broken down, and, you know, it is a city facility. We are a, we do have a robust parks and recreation. We do have different options for us, so we're wide open to making that work.
And then two, and then one more question for me. The equipment rental and stuff like that, somebody comes in. We have golf clubs.
Yep.
We have that.
We will have that, that's all included in the business plan. You know, a couple thousand dollars and from some clubs and sets that we will buy. But I guarantee, once we build this thing, Titleist and Callaway, they're going to throw us some free clubs as promotion to have out there as well. So we'll have all that stuff for everybody.
This is the first phase, and the second phase is what?
So the second phase is more of expanding the kitchen, expanding that back area like at Holly Ridge, where they have the fire pit and they have outdoor seating out back that really accentuates and lends itself more to events and activities. So that's more of the second phase, figuring out, do we want that full kitchen? Do we want to bump out that kitchen and have more seating and get into that? And then, you know, third phase, like, Council, the upstairs, the downstairs, I think we need to get in there and figure out the best use. There'll be some office needs, there'll be some storage needs, but that is a really, really good space. There'll be some needs for some bathroom renovations as well, meeting some ADA accessibility issues down the road. But everything's in place, it just needs facelifts and best use.
One of those places being where it's still relatively, because athletes tell people about it, and not even much training built yet, but I'm hoping one place moving to still be an equal part of the world.
I just wanted to address some questions about the heavy part of it. I, you know, I think it does, something like criteria, by way of improvisation opportunity for the kids, they may have challenges of affording golf, writing, because now you're in a setting where you don't have to pay for all of the amenities, and also it provides an opportunity for the kids to be really, really good at it, go to school for it, and then go to college for it, and possibly go make a career out of it. So there, I think the, I think there's some unlimited kind of opportunities there.
I agree.
I think about it from a broader vantage point. To try to get kids who's never played golf before, come into the space, love it, and then want to do it more, I think it also adds that to it as well.
Yes, sir. And the teaching aspect of it as well. John is a teaching pro, but he's more focused on the administration and the overall success of the facility. Maybe we bring in additional professionals, teaching pros, that can capitalize and use this and be at our disposal to do these clinics. We do some great stuff with First T for inner-city kids, exposing kids that otherwise would not be exposed to golf.
Remind me, isn't there a golf program right now that the golf course uses for young golfers?
Well, we use the First T. We partner with, it's a national organization, First T, right?
First T and we do it with Special Olympics.
We do First T, we do Special Olympics. We also host several high schools that are their practice grounds at the New York Country Club, as well as Wayne Gen University. So we're very dedicated to outreach for these high schools and for colleges.
So I think maybe part of the discussion is, we have to get it in place so we can utilize it. And it's a city facility, and I agree, it's a member of the country club, then it ought to be, you know, where at some point, some level, everyone could access it if they wish to do so. But then since we have our own Parks and Recreation Department, we can build a program perhaps that emphasizes this new amenity for some of the community centers. I don't know how we would partner all that together, but we can certainly come up with that. And use it as that piece, that way it would be, somebody might get that interested as he was talking about, but otherwise, it would be another level of recreation and experience for some of our folks that would necessarily have the opportunity to do that, so.
Yes, ma'am.
So do you need a vote or is it consensus?
Well, I'll defer to the manager, you know. There's a couple decision points. Do you like the scope of project? Do you like the phasing? I think that's the way to go for us. And then there's, you know, you want to speak, sir?
What does a million dollars give us?
A million dollars gets us five simulators. The five simulators are roughly $40,000 to $50,000 each. The $350,000 construction gets us a front porch.
Yep.
With a new set of French doors cut into the building, and an enclosure where the porch there.
Porch there.
I can't say that word, sorry. Enclose that, and build up that floor, and then some other minor work inside.
And add the power upgrades.
Yes, sir.
And parking improvements.
And then the other $350,000 is roughly the parking improvements, so that brings it to roughly a million dollars.
So, okay, so that's not the parking lot as well, so that's not including the parking lot?
Yes, sir. So $250,000, and then $350,000 and $350,000, give or take, is right around a million dollars. We're comfortable we could get that done, at least this first phase.
When does the parking have to be done?
I think, again, my big thing is getting those simulators in there.
So my question, Pete, can we, can we get the simulators put in? I mean, if you, if you look at it, and you cut down $350,000 out of it, wait 36 months, wait 24 months, allow these, allow us to see what's going on with these things, they would start to pay for the upgrades we've already made. And then we could step in and do something with the parking lot as we move forward.
The, I would say yes, the only piece is, there's a circular drive that's there. There's a circular drive that's in the front.
Yep.
Extending that porch. There's going to have to be some money that gets allocated for the parking. My $350,000 was just for the construction pieces. That other $350,000 was for making, taking out that circular drive and making more parking in there.
So that was my question, because I thought I saw, I thought I saw that twice, this is my.
It was just, it was two pools of $350,000.
Got you.
That, I really do think there needs to, we might not have to do all of that, but I do think we need to do some parking and front.
Because this is going to be packed.
I think it's going to be packed. The good thing is, we do have some space in the back of the building, but I don't want to encumber that because if we move forward, plus, if you play golf, I hit the ball into that back parking lot a good bit where I shouldn't, from two different holes, so. I need the simulator, so. But yeah, I would be, if you don't want to do the whole $350,000 for the parking, we need something for that parking lot. It's a very busy parking lot because it's like any place, people want to park close, and nobody wants to park down at the lower lot and walk that extra 25 yards up to the building.
Well, we need parking improvements, have we not, since before this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The main issue is the back porch is going to be, what's the budget for that?
Nothing, that would be kind of a second phase. Second phase, we would extend the porch on the backside and put more of that fire pit and outdoor seating and events space in the back. Yeah, trying to find the three words. There is, there is a buzz about this in the community, since we did put it out there earlier. Now is the time to strike. If we wait, somebody else is going to do this. And if you want to wait, that's well and good. We're looking at giving you what we, we as staff feel is the best use for this facility right now. Yes, sir.
So earlier conversations on this facility were just all concept idea, you know, and, and... What's Pete's delivering to you today is what we told you we were going to bring to you earlier. So this is more meat on the bone, you know, fleshing out the concept a little bit more. They have the numbers on the simulators, but we don't, we have some gestimates about adding the front porch, but we don't have any kind of hard numbers on there. We haven't put that out, and we don't have any.
All right, we've done very informal, had two contractors come out that play golf out there and say, hey, give me a ballpark for this, because I don't have architecture drawings or anything along those lines, so.
So next steps. One, I think, is, does city council like the concept, agree with the concept, and want to move forward with the concept, kind of by consensus? Second thing would be for staff to go and get those formal construction quotes and bring that back to the council, because if you know, you have hard number. I already have the numbers on the simulators.
Yes, sir.
We need to add the number on the construction for the front porch and doing those things. And then let city council approve that as a package.
So you want consensus, you want consensus, not a motion and approval, because?
Consensus, you want to move forward with this concept? Or do we want to move forward with this concept?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
All right.
Mr. Manager?
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor, is your in?
There is a timing aspect in purchasing the simulators. If we could move forward, get some sort of allocation to purchase those simulators and start that process, and I would need some money to do the architectural and be able to get those hard construction costs. We have no money allocated for that, for that piece of.
To do the, to do the construction drawings, just in order to get the bids?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I don't have the funds allocated for that, so. I would say $50,000, because that's roughly what it was for the pro shop. And the simulators, I would say not to exceed $245,000.
Hold on, hold on, what is the brand of the simulators that you're looking at?
Forsight.
Forsight.
Forsight is the company. Right, John, in that there?
Forsight, yeah, PGA Superstore, PGA Usus. And we have their top-of-the-line, that's what kind of revenue does it?
What kind of revenue does the golf course bring in now?
1.5 million.
No, not red flags. That's our, we cover our costs. We cover our, that's an easier way to say it. We're not, we're not bringing in a ton of revenue per se, but we're covering our costs, which hasn't happened in a lot of years prior. Is that safe to say, Lisa?
Yes, that is, that's true.
Okay.
So, Pete, what I hear you saying is, your request would be an allocation for simulator purchase and $50,000 for the architectural drawings so that you could go get the bids to see what it's going to cost to do.
With the knowledge that I'm going to come back to you and say, okay, here's the construction, and with that, I'll work with Sarah. Sarah, do you feel comfortable, if you guys could kind of give us a quote on what it would take to redo the parking area, or is that something I need to contract out?
So you're looking at $300,000, and I believe the finance director says that that would be an allocation of dollars.
Correct.
Yeah, consensus, yeah, what happens?
Yep.
You have the full motion that we have paid $200,000 for the simulators and construction.
The architectural drives.
The structural drawings.
I would motion a second. All those in favor, please, if I raise your hand.
And the last item on here, I really appreciate you all to take a look at that. We currently sell beer at the golf course. I know there are differing opinions throughout the city, county. I really don't think this facility is feasible without selling beer, wine, and liquor front side. And I would formally ask you all to, or the manager, to give us that approval to move forward with obtaining the necessary licensing for that. Mary, the last item, we currently sell beer at the golf course. I do not think this facility will be feasible if we don't sell beer, wine, and liquor. So I would ask for your approval or a vote to allow us to move forward with obtaining the necessary licensing for that.
As long as you sell pepsi.
Absolutely.
Okay, put up a motion.
I like a motion to approve the sale of beer, wine, and liquor inside the facility.
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of beer, wine, and liquor on site.
I have a motion to second, all those in favor, please, if you have your hand.
Now, of course, to the.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have to have, um, does the body man have license?
Yes, ma'am.
What capability is someone driving?
Absolutely. Great question. We work through the, the Health Department, through the ABC Board, uh, and our local police, ABC individual. There are different cert, levels of certification needed for those who actually serve, and, and we will make sure we are in compliance. We got John. So, so one two thousand.
So our risk managers will make sure that we have the appropriate policies and procedures in place regarding the handling of alcohol, the serving of alcohol, those types of things, and, uh, that falls under our general liability insurance.
Lisa or Mark, do I have to do this as a budget amendment at the next council meeting? Okay.
Yes, we'll follow up if there's a budget amendment on.
Okay.
Anything else we need?
No, not right now.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
At some point, I'd like to get through to come back to us with a timeline on the other places, but the other part is just important.
The Pro Shop? Yes, ma'am, we're, we're.
Not the Pro Shop, they face.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yes. No, if, if it was, you know, but I would, and, and Councilman Carr, close your ears, I would tear down this building, I would tear down the, the Pro Shop and build a brand-new freestanding building that had Pro Shop, um, ballroom, simulators altogether, Mark Park's losing what's left, and. But, but I will, I will gladly take this, I think this will be a, a, a very good thing for the city of the road, for the golfers. Thank you. Thank you all.
Pete, Pete has the, the next presentation.
So I've got the, yes, so I've got the introduction of this, I'm gonna give you a very brief and quick background, I know it's late, and, and caffeine's starting to kick in. I do have Duncan Webb with us and James Vich, our, our theater supervisor with us. As you all know, we embarked on a strategic plan for the theater background, the theater, um, so nineteen forty, the theater opened in nineteen forty-ish as a movie house, operated for, to nineteen ninety-one-ish for movies, shuttered for twenty, thirty years, fell into very bad disrepair. About eight years ago, the city, uh, took it over from a group of good-natured folks that wanted to revive the theater, and our goal was to get that theater up and running, do what we can, and get people downtown. I really do, you all heard me say this, I do believe the theater has been a fantastic catalyst for the growth and development of downtown. Between the theater and the science center, I really think that, that, and, and, and other things that we've done in the city, uh, but I really think because of those two, we're seeing more restaurants, we're seeing more traffic, more activity, and everything downtown. We never really had a plan, we never really had great direction, and, and, uh, I don't think it's anybody to blame, but I, I think we, where we're at now is, we want buy-in, we want direction from city council that will help us and help us transcend future city councils. I know some of y'all are gonna be here forever, uh, but some of you might not, you know what I mean? And everybody has different ways of thinking, we need a roadmap now to help give us direction, so, so we're not in the situation we're at now, where, you know, we're, we're doing what we think is best, but that might not align with what council's wishes are. And we will do whatever council directs us to do. However council directs us to do, it is not our facility, we are passionate about it. James is very passionate and protective about the theater, as he should, as I want my employees to be, but in the end, we work for you, and we will do whatever the consensus of the city council is. So with that, we, we've hired Duncan Webb, Webb Management, to conduct our strategic plan, and he has some initial, um, findings, facts, uh, for us. So I'm gonna stop talking, I'm gonna invite Duncan to come up, and thank you all for your, for your support of us.
Thank you, Pete. Pete, can I, can I put that back in here?
Oh, yeah.
All right, uh, Mayor, Members of Council, thank you for inviting me to come and share our work with you. Gosh, you've seen so many slides already, so I'm gonna try and raise a few, just so we can have a lot of discussion. Uh, I am a management consultant to people who build, renovate, and operate theaters. So I've spent thirty-five years roaming around mostly North America, advising cities and arts organizations, schools, on building, fixing, and running these funny buildings. I started this practice twenty-eight years ago, we're on project five hundred and twenty-seven. So what we say is our job is to come into a community, figure things out, speak truth to power, and then get over the limit. Uh, we were here, we did the feasibility study that encouraged you to renovate the theater, uh, and you did it, um, God bless you for doing that, I think it should be considered to be a great success. So we came in now basically to bring a strategic plan to guide the next five years. Uh, we looked inside the building, what's going on, programming, staffing.
Can, can I pause you real fast, this is super important, and we're missing, two council members, they had to step out.
Good.
Can, can we do five minutes? Is that okay? I don't, I, before you dive into it, I just wanna make sure so everybody's here. Thank you so much.
Okay, no problem.